I'd like to call this meeting to begin the city school board's order. First item on the agenda is the presentation of the college of the Gainesville High, NJROTC. Everyone please stand.
Forward march. Colored, halt. Right, face. Freeze and... Colors.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with every being.
Carry. Colors. Right, cut. Count to march, march. Colored, halt. Right, face. Forward, march. Colored, halt. Colored, follow.
Yes, would, uh, yes, please, everybody can say, um, yes, would you please tell us your name, your class, and your future plans at Gainesville High?
Hi, good evening, my name is Montserrat Jimenez. And, um, from my future, I'm a junior. And, um, I want to go into the Navy and get into the medical field.
Good evening, my name is Jay Smith, I'm a junior at Gainesville High School. After high school, I plan on being a US Navy pilot.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Cocker, I am in eleventh grade. Um, after high school, I want to be a trauma nurse.
Good evening, my name is Zoe Finelli. I'm a junior and after high school, I plan on finishing my associate's degree and going into the Navy and getting into naval special worker.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are the district recognition, uh, the COVID. Tell us about the teacher of the year and your retirement school, Daniel Exporation.
As Ms. Boe right next to me, she was one of the schools that went COVID here who were not able to recognize her heroes of the herd as well. So it's not we recognize last year's heroes of the herd.
So our teacher of the year and district teacher of the year is Ms. Suzanne Sidia. And I just want to give you a couple little things about Ms. Sidia. She tells her students to write down their goals and to think big and don't limit themselves with just short-term goals. And students fulfill their goals. They celebrate those goals in the classroom and I thought that was really amazing to be able to, um, express yourself in the classroom. And when you do something really well with your goals, everyone celebrates them with you. Ms. Sidia was able to check off her own dream when she became a teacher at GEA. That was seven years ago. She said when she was a child, she would pretend that her siblings were her students. And when they lose interest in playing school with her, she'd opt to using stuffed animals. She was determined to give in as much practice as being a teacher as she could, even if her students didn't respond to her questions. Ms. Sidia taught first grade for five years before changing to third grade. When an administrator, I don't know which one, came to her and said, how does third grade sound to you? And she said, I'm not sure, but I'll do whatever you want me to do. So she left her comfort zone and she said, she worried that she wouldn't be prepared for that transition. She discovered something about herself, though. Even though she's not much of a risk taker in her life or online, when it comes to her students, she's always willing to try new things and to create an exciting and rich learning experience for her students. Ms. Sidia is known for her beautiful smile, her infectious laugh, and her willingness to always help others. Our GEA and district teacher of the year is Suzanne Sidia. So I have to say I'm very proud of Ms. Sidia because for this picture, she did have on her persona. Usually whenever we take a picture for her being district teacher of the year and for a teacher of the year at GEA, it just so happened it was persona day at school by time. And so for our retirees, tonight I'd like to recognize Ms. Marie Merritt. Ms. Merritt started working in nineteen ninety-one as a substitute teacher for Gainesville City. In nineteen ninety-four, she joined Fair Street Elementary as the media clerk. In two thousand and four, she became the QB clerk for Inota Elementary. Two thousand and six, she became the technology teacher at GEA. And then she rounded off her teaching career as a kinder teacher at GEA. We miss you and we love you, Ms. Merritt. Please come on up.
Are you into the show? Larry.
Are you all of them? Two. Two.
Thank you guys.
And I'd also like to recognize Deb Bennett. He's not able to be here tonight. However, Mr. Bennett played football and basketball for Gainesville City Red Elephants when he was in high school. And in two thousand and six, he began his teaching career with PE at GEA. He also assisted the coaching staff at the high school with the basketball team. And he completed this year or last year, two thousand and twenty, for GEA, and we dearly miss Coach Bennett. And tonight, Mr. Sammy will take his award home to him. Heroes of the herd, okay. Ms. Masters is gonna do our heroes of the herd for us.
Okay, it's my privilege to, um, tell you a few things about our certified hero of the herd. These are things that the staff said about her, says makes the atmosphere of the media center a fabulous place for all students, teachers, and visitors. Goes above and beyond to help others, especially during our remote learning. Has a positive attitude and willingness to help. She's constantly reaching out to the staff to see if they need assistance. She's a delight to work with. And she's dedicated to our staff and students no matter what the circumstances. And that has been so true, even more so since these things were written as we've been doing these. And Ms. Annie Vignola, our certified hero of the herd. And then our certified hero of the herd, she has gone above and beyond to help the connection scheme during her local learning. She's the hardest worker and most reliable parent I have ever had the privilege to work with. She supports the students and encourages them to have confidence in their abilities. She builds relationships with the students. She has a positive attitude and takes on changes and challenges with ease. She's flexible and never complies. And now she's actually certified for us, but Danny Lill.
Thank you, Ms. Boe, for, uh, for the years and later in the program, um, having the board's conversations. Do we have any visitors from leadership all count? We have a citizen's card. This does begin our business portion of the meeting, so if you need, we'd be free to do so now. Thank you. All right, so, uh, we're taking questions from minutes, excuse me, there's a... We have most of the time, just to spread the second round just to be all of the... Boe, you're, you're a bit... Would you tell us about all the events that have been going on at Gainesville Exporation?
Really fast. Well, first I want to begin by saying thank you to the boards and Dr. William for your leaderships during the reopening of our school this year, the closing of our schools for last year, and your thoughtfulness and considerations when making this part of decisions for our school members now. And I also want to say, and from the staff members too, thank you for the whole week of opening house for being able to have those conferences with our parents. I'm thanking our parents, mind the deed about letting the students come back to, if your children come back to our school. We answered your questions on your peers. And then also for allowing us to be able to have that staff at an opening and a beginning in school. Being able to have that prepaid group that we players come to our school. Having the chance to acclimate them to the building, I think, did a world of wonderful stories this year. The least amount of crime that I've ever experienced in school in a year for this, it was great. So I want to talk a couple of thing, a couple of things that were nurtured in our school so far this year. Back in October, I think it was October sixth, we had our health department drive through shot, blue shot. We had over a hundred and fifty parents, students, and staff receive their shots that day. So I'm very thankful for that. Our parents were very thankful. Very convenient, they just drive in their car, get their shot and drop it away. Also, I want to say thank you about our playground equipment. I appreciate your contribution to help us get the new playground equipment. It's very sad to see those students look through the window at the beginning of school, not be able to go out there and play on it. So when we opened up at stage two, the students were allowed to go back on the playground and play on the equipment. They loved it. So thank you very much. And then another way that our students have been nurtured this year is through the mentoring program. GEA has always done a great job with getting mentors in our students. This year's been a little different. We've had phone calls, I have a phone call from our mentor. Wanted to, when can we come back in, we're not able to yet. So we set up the Zoom meetings where then on Friday, our mentors and our gente that is school are allowed to Zoom together. And it is wonderful to see the smile, the kids are giggling, and it's just more normal. This year having that Zoom conference with their mentors than it was at the very beginning in August or September. So this is right, if you're able to do that. So a couple of our challenges that we've had this year. First, remote instruction, you know, going out last year, yes, we did the remote instruction. Our teachers did the best to their ability and we focused more on the level we need in our student. But this year when we started back and we did remote instruction, it took a lot. Technical skill, teachers had to know all these different programs and how to do it and break down rooms and all the other components that we wanted for remote instruction. Um, they had to have that stable internet connection and they had to have electricity. So the storm came along in October. We went out for two days. We told teachers, this is your time, still Zoom, still do your Google classroom. So not only was it a challenge that our teachers had to learn how to do remote instruction, but they had to learn to do it without the electricity and without internet connection at their home. But let me say, our teachers, I got phone calls, I got text messages. We're in our car, I'm charging up my phone so that I can use my phone data and I can still Zoom with my kids. So I was very, very pleased with that. And they also made sure that I knew they were out there Zooming without the regular line. So it weren't too hard to know, and even though this is a challenge for our teachers to have to do remote instruction along with regular instruction periodically, they do it to the utmost of their ability. So our beginning of the year's printer data showed us that K-two students still need that extra support, more support than what they did in years prior. Because they're still learning how to read in this, for a long time, they were out of school. So we're blessing them with that extra parent support. Um, anytime we have extra time for a teacher, they're pulling small groups and they're really getting our students to where they need to know how to read, learn how to read phonetically, the need of awareness, that they're doing all those things. And our three-five, the data comparatively looks about the way it did two thousand and four, uh, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and fourteen, we're back in the month, two thousand and nineteen. So even that the net mean said, the students know how to read, we know that. But how much do they know, do they understand what they read? So that's what we're really focused on in three-five. For math, it's a new printer this year. And it doesn't quite compare to the scores that we got from Ames Web, which is what we used last year. But the I-RAY, the new math program, is K-five on the computer to do your assessment. So I think the different format, the very beginning of school, kids were getting, having to get used to the format. And I think this time, when we do our assessments, we're gonna see much better scores for math, too. And the I-RAY also has a personalized learning component to it called Pathway. And that is, it starts with a child's app and builds upon their knowledge, which is a benefit to the teachers. So we have that two pieces, uh, instruction going on of getting the students where they're at to where they need to be. Yeah, everything is wonderful at GEA. We're just walking in raw. Do you have any questions for me?
Uh, Ms. Boe, would you share with us, uh, your, your core mentor, who are, where they brought and what they do?
The majority of our mentors are from Crest Winds, the living facility, housing facility over off the Grand Bridge Road. And we have about thirty mentors. So far, the ones that felt comfortable doing Zoom, we have about fifteen, sixteen doing that right now.
Any other question? Uh, thank you, Lawrence. Go ahead.
True love of the, of the... And thank you so much for agreeing to, and for Ms. Sammy coming over to our school. We had a, um, character day contest for faculty and our fourth grade team won that. So congratulations to our third team. Thank y'all for coming. Certainly do appreciate that. You're a pleasure.
We'd like to, once again, uh, thank you on behalf of the citizens of all here for opening up the locations.
Yeah, can we hear a smooth voice, Steph? Thank you.
All right, now, do I have a question to adopt minutes? Someone that we adopted minutes. There are most of us, Mr. Smith, or your second?
Second.
Second, I'll ring you, I'll listen to you. Uh, we've got a lot, we've got a lot of things, most of you to adopt, and stand and, and see. Second, we have a most about Mr. Smith, and second about Mr. Ward Holmes, I'll listen to you. All right, that's done, move.
Yeah, you know, in Gainesville City Schools, we live by the model of one Gainesville. And as we inspire, nurture, challenge, and prepare our youth for what's next, we know at some point, people invested in us to be where we are today. So Gainesville, Hong County definitely has a history of people who have done exactly that. You see the need to respond as people call for them. One of those influential visionaries is Miss Bule Rucker. Uh, and we've asked Ms. Charlene Williams, and today in particular, Mr. Ricky Young, uh, to come and talk a little about Miss Bule Rucker, her impact on Gainesville and Hong County, and just, uh, how she continued to impact the area today. So, Mr. Young, it is no coincidence that once he retired, COVID came. As a, as a retired economics, uh, teacher, uh, he knew what was coming. And so he decided to retire from the property. Is that accurate?
As a whole school teacher, the technology field, what young and with, um, yeah, I knew I'd be...
I thought you just started every now and then, so glad I know. Thank you, Mr. Young, for being here on behalf of the nation.
And to the board of education, we thank you for allowing us. Thank you for allowing us to present this in the name of the member of the board of the Duma Riker Foundation. And why the two folks from the foundation are here today, don't just stand up. So they, family members, grandson, great-granddaughters, board members are here with me. Uh, Duma Riker, I, I'd like to tell a personal story as quickly as I can. I was born in Gainesville, December of nineteen fifty-seven. My parents' family comes from Jackson County and had lived in Jackson and Hall County. My mom's family comes from Southern Field, Georgia, North Carolina, so, and all the way from Ohio, I guess, I came to people in Gaines. Although in the whole Bule Riker, when I was a kid, we both were god and mother. I have come and understand because I did major in history before you could not understand that. Then she opened this school out the road. Yeah, heard the term out the road, it's hot out in the town. Uh, she wrote her own autobiography called The Right Pathway. It's twelve pages long, it's worth a read. I know you can get a copy from the North Georgia History Museum. She was called godmother when I knew she already was old and had pets, and she was always there. But anytime I was ever functioning or not, you had to speak to godmother. Now, most folks have got parents that's designed by their parent. Godmother was a whole lot of people's parents because all of them to get to pay for their boarding school, referred to as godmother. Cause of now, my mother and three of her sisters from a family of twelve children, but seven of those children went to Duma Riker's school all the way from Southern Field, Georgia. It shows geography, she covered some space. Well, all of those mostly girls, one being my mom, stayed in eighth year. They all became teachers. Three of them retired through Gainesville City Schools. And one of them, Mark, retired from Mills Park Elementary. Laura May Volto retired from Henry Street Elementary, and my mother, Estelle Yar, retired from Enoch. The school where Bule was, she started the school in nineteen, she graduated with, um, from high school in nineteen oh nine. And it was a vision of hers to build a school, a black high school, because they were not prepared or available at the time. She started a boarding school. Because we were two points in their kids, but they could work. It wasn't new, she went to school the same way. She started learning how to make seeds from the paper that was in the cracks of their sharecloth perhaps. She knew she wanted to be a teacher the first step. She did create the school. In the seventies, when the schools consolidated, that her school began doing county and city schools. She wrote this, this school is now on the survey, a high school has been transferred to the city, leaving us with the name of a day school. This institution operates an independent high school at night for those who are unable to attend school. Also, the Veterans Administration directed a full-time veterans high school at night. The school has turned down their seating blocks for the administration building. Several of the blocks have already been made for this purpose. Many students have finished here and have gone out into the world, helping others to rise to the scale, rise in the scales of civilization. A non-anomalational school with its primary purposes are the building of Christian character and the development of citizenship. She instilled those characteristics in all persons. I had great love for teaching when I was... I had great love for teaching when I was a kid, and didn't know where it all came from, because I come from a family with five generations of educators. She is one of them all. Ms. Wendy Brown's mother graduated in the nineteen fifty-five class from the Duell Riker School. I can start doing stuff like that, but I'm gonna stop with that. Her influence continues to cost her. One reason I became a teacher is because of all the great teachers in my life. Godmother, Buehlrocker, my grandmother, who taught at one of the schools from nineteen eleven to nineteen forty-four, and sent her children to purport of education, so it's really important. And that's her influence. And, Miss Anne, as you run the hook, the hook seems like the same kind of vision, Ms. Rucker, for the needs of the children. And her influence will be felt for a long time. I put four years in as a teacher. Suzanne, Cindy, you're a teacher of the year. I taught her. I'm just bringing all that up to say, her influence, it may have been a right pathway, but the education was that important, that was worth it to her. And we want to remember her. And if by any chance, the city of Gainesville, the Gainesville City Schools can pay tribute, we appreciate it. If you want to learn more history, I agree with me the history, or you can come see me, I can talk to you, but days and days and days of our influence. A lot of folks in Gainesville don't know that in the history. We shame for not to be remembered.
Uh, next topic on the agenda is, uh, construction of advanced placement and Charlotte's Child Foundation. Uh, this is better, Mr. T. Mr. T.
Good evening. The Ridge of the Charlotte's Childers Fund was designed to provide various educational services to students, including field trips, curriculum, and, and testing. During the past year, the lines were used and extended to support the advanced placement exams. They've been quite helpful. Uh, in the years, they've paid for various bits and pieces of those advances for our students' need. Uh, this coming year, the, uh, consolidating funds will be covering all of the A P funding, which is really a nice deal for our students, the school's level, their A P exams covered through consolidating funds this coming year. Uh, the Charlotte funds are available, uh, if needed, to support any other efforts with regards to testing. The current projected balance for our funds going forward in the, uh, the Charlotte's Childers Fund is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, fifty-eight cents. Um, this year, we're looking at a slight increase in our A P exam funding. There is a chance that those funds could use for, uh, for students who are very good at testing or, or A P proper needs.
You can see that our A P numbers over the last number of years definitely increased, uh, the number of courses we offer. You see, who knows, our folks have talked about this. And how many A P courses we offer in class?
This year, we have twenty-seven courses being offered. We added one from last year, and we actually have a group of A P Spanish students taking classes this year. Right now, we're on par to spend more money for funds. We're probably two hundred, two hundred exams short, but we haven't started our spring semester course yet. And I, I have, I have no doubt that we'll slightly hit that number. We're a little bit shy, uh, this fall compared to where we were last fall. A lot of students were a lack of incentives since we started out, remote, a lack of incentive about A P classes remotely with the T G.
You have any questions? The, uh, the business, Charlie and her, and her sons, uh, helped spark this, um, this contract problem years ago. And also wanted to include S A T and A C T tests when needed. So in addition to the fees that you have covered in your report, uh, please note that those are allow expenses or reimbursements, whichever is easier to well handle. But I do want to encourage students to take those nationally rarest tests.
We are, there, there is a potential option. We also have some students looking to possibly test their bilingual seal as well, if that's something they're interested in supporting. I'm, I'm sure they would, uh, with the, with the, with O G F and I O P S. We greatly appreciate the, the support that you guys have given to the A P program at Amesville High School. We'll continue to push forward.
Thank you. Uh, I, I really appreciated your newsletter, the fact that last year we had forty-five different individuals score wild across thirteen different subjects, and that is highly impressive. It does increase the count of the total number of threes and fours that were achieved. It's, I think our A P program is really the interview to keep on doing. I appreciate that. Thank you. We'll, we'll continue to discuss. Okay, next, Mrs. Sanders.
Well, I know that you all have a report just to update you on what we have been doing in, in the conference first semester. Uh, there's no doubt that we've had to make some changes, um, to accommodate some of our health concerns and the guidelines there. But we are still looking for those who support our students. Uh, just to reiterate our focus areas, we support them in, in all of the behavioral health. That was an area that we committed to with community partnerships, and we've expanded that to, uh, the physical health these, this year, so we have, uh, worked more with the nurses and the student health court at the medical ward. So we have expanded that piece with, with students, mental, behavioral health, as well as physical. Uh, academic supports are still in place, uh, which is the second area. And then also the basic needs service to work with our social worker to provide their support. Uh, and then we have our continued partnership, uh, with, uh, Human G, with the health system. Uh, we have a resident physician that comes every Tuesday, works in our clinic with us, and works with students, amazing spirit there. And also works with our C T A D, uh, program to, so that our students can be exposed to different careers. So all things have changed and they look different than what we had anticipated when we got the resident J A area. We're still, uh, offering this support to our students this year and continue to.
So you guys have any questions? Two things, uh, one, if please, time to add the award that the superintendent accepted, uh, from the floor.
In Georgia's Children's Association, uh, we were awarded, uh, middle October, uh, with our pioneer, Risa, and our region has, uh, won the president's award from President of G S S A. Very proud of our team. I mean, just all together, the way the community came together, the standard, the spell, Mr. Green, uh, N G H S, the Medical Center Foundation, everybody just, they saw the need and to be able to be a part of that, to make that happen, uh, definitely something that's a testament to putting the standards in there, willing to help lead those efforts at the school. We did have to take kind of a step back a little bit due to COVID, but we also realized there were new needs that students had during that time because of the closures. And so the hook has been exactly what it's intended to do, which is making the mix for our kids as they, as they change, uh, throughout.
Also, I hope, I hope it's not inappropriate for, to ask for a visual, uh, recognition for the medical center in this golf tournament, closely, uh, twenty nineteen golf tournament. Uh, somewhere inside the hook is a visual around her, and, and a thank you to that group of support.
Absolutely. We have one plaque, uh, for a picture that's right when we walk into the main office. We also have, um, a recognition of all the sponsors, um, and so we can definitely look into doing a plaque that's a more, uh, front end picture.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Sanders. All right, that was the two, twenty twenty-one board meetings.
Yes, in one of our previous meetings, uh, it was discussed about changing our start time from six P M. to five thirty P M. You will see only twenty twenty-one, uh, four meetings scheduled. Uh, you have locations, uh, like, for example, in February, you will actually be meeting back here, but we'll be recognizing centenies. We do have to meet at the high school because, uh, it's been used, it's looked that evening. Uh, so for the most part, you see, we are going to be back here every month for the main meetings because we can spread out. We still recognize a small number of individuals, so you will see the schools that we recognize in parentheses. And now at the bottom, we each not yet have the scheduled location for the second half of the year, uh, because we are waiting to finalize a couple of things, uh, once the new year comes in. So we'll bring back those locations, which will be here, the board office of the school, one of our pre-standard locations. So tonight, I'm recommending a board meeting schedule, still the first and the third. Uh, we do push it some Tuesdays, uh, day after M L K, as well as day after Labor Day. But everybody else is the person third Monday.
Does anybody have any comments or questions on this? Uh, I'd like to comment about entertaining motion to adopt, so to account for the time and count. A motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Dr. Randy, in favor, so she carries. Uh, this is kind of the, uh, question, my next second.
Good evening. Uh, how are you this evening, October twenty twenty, my next second? Uh, October revenues were six point five five million. And that's, we did have a nice tax receipt coming in, a three point four million, uh, part of tax receipt, so that helped us. Um, there are a lot of revenues efficient to keep these earnings. Our expenditures were six point one million, and that left us with revenues or expenditures of six hundred and forty-six thousand. Our year-to-date, um, revenues were sixteen point nine million. Year-to-date expenditures of twenty-five point five million, with expenditures for revenues of eight point five million at this point, uh, here, and because of, um, tax receipts, um, not yet in yet. So, um, at least this month, we did have a little bit of a kickback down the, um, the fund balances last month. But that means we're down to eleven point five million in the, in the October. And last year's, um, revenue was, I believe, less than that, or ten point seven million for fund value. And total expenditures, you know, were three, three point two percent, which was just a little bit less than we were at. So pretty standard numbers, here, uh, two years.
Mr. Beth, on revenue side, last year, if you had those numbers, probably where, percentage of budgeted revenue, where were we?
We're actually, uh, where that's, we're twenty-three point two. Uh, these plus revenues still continue to be strong, coming in the month of October, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Any questions, Mrs. Beth? Motion to the board of the financials. A motion by Mr. Smith, a second. A second by Dr. Randy, you have the discussion, questions, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you, Mrs. Beth. Glad you had a discussion tonight.
Uh, what was the superintendent's report? Yeah, first of all, Mr. Young, uh, Ms. Williams, and, uh, Ms. Milton was here and some of the, the Rucker family. You can just see kind of the, the passion, uh, Mr. Young has for anything in particular, uh, history of education and the impact people have on the lives of others. So we look forward, uh, to, uh, working with the Rucker Foundation to find a way that as we work on Gainesville High School campuses rebounding, how do we embed some of those historical pieces that got us at this point to success? Uh, and then also how we inform the youth of today and the, the late foundations so that they, if they continue to work with and in our community. So just really looking forward to, to doing that partnership and renew something hopefully pretty soon, uh, as that building continues to, uh, to be directed. You see on the monthly superintendent's report, uh, graduation rate was released last week by the Department of Education. Uh, Mr. Green and his team did a great job, especially during COVID, knowing that there were so many changes of trying to find students in March. We know many of our students, they went remote, they went home, but many wouldn't find jobs, and many might have been displaced because jobs may not have been available for them here in the community. And so with all that in mind, uh, the, the graduation rate went up almost six percent. With our black population just over two percent, uh, basically no change in Hispanic, white, no change. Uh, English learners went up four percent, and our special education students almost went up seventeen percent. Just really proud of the team doing, finding our students, and sure that they needed, they got the received supports, supports that they needed in order to get to that point. So really looking forward, uh, to being back in that, uh, phase, uh, and just, just a true testament to the work of Mr. Green and his team. On the next part, the, uh, weekly COVID reports, uh, Mr. Nettie, if you will, please, uh, click on that. Uh, one thing I do want to share with you, we are ending this first semester. We continue to update weekly, uh, by side the number of new COVID cases. Uh, the reason we do not do this, uh, in a different way is we may find out about a case on Monday, but they might have been tested last Wednesday. So they've already been absent from school, so you can't, you don't really know why they're absent until the report comes back. So we report this information, you can see we had nine new cases, uh, this past week compared to four each of the two previous weeks. Quarantines are down, our teams are doing a great job, our teachers are doing a great job, and admin are doing a great job of just going in to ensure that our student charts are accurate. Our families are doing a fantastic job of going in and if the child is sick, let's keep them home. Let's wait a couple of days. If we have symptoms, let's get them tested before we bring them back to school. So it's definitely been a learning curve for all of us. You can see we did have one week that was fairly high, with two or sixteen total, uh, quarantined. The last few weeks, it's looked, it looks, it's looked great. Uh, just really, really proud of the whole team. Now, you look at other areas and some of that spikes in different ways. Our community has really rebounded and responded well, uh, to some of the spikes back in April and May. So our goal is to continue to operate school just like we've operated since early September. Uh, I do have a, a concern that not necessarily, well, Thanksgiving will impact Christmas, because we will have that two-week break for the winter break. But I've been worried a little bit about, like, January, early March. Uh, that's typically what it gets with the colder, uh, big winter inside, but also we may feel some of the effects from the winter break. So we're going to continue to monitor these daily, as well as weekly, continue to update the pledge, you know, based on the numbers. But one thing we have learned in all of this, and you'll see it in, in the, in just a minute, is our kids are learning to transition well, and our teachers, and you heard Ms. Popeye talk about some of our teachers, uh, just responding. They need to respond or be used to it, and just so proud, uh, of what everybody's doing. Uh, on the East Plus One Projects update, we do have the, uh, new middle school that was approved at the last meeting, uh, for just under thirty-six million dollars. We are continuing to do some committee work on attending some of the school name and mascot, but the college brings some of that to you here in the next couple of months. Uh, while also receiving some feedback, we can be, uh, public on a couple of those items. Uh, we do not have a groundbreaking ceremony set yet, but we're working with, uh, Caribaya Construction to determine that time. Gainesville High School campus, board members, I appreciate you being able to see some of that building, the advanced studies. Came in just under nine billion dollars, well, it's the cafeteria, media center. If you drive by that campus now, you see a little, a large void. Uh, you can see a lot of buildings now, which you may not have seen before without having to walk around. We're on track, and looking great, and you can see the timelines of the area. We do have a groundbreaking ceremony, uh, for Thursday at ten, uh, since, since this has been published. Uh, we have not opened it up to the public just because of COVID, uh, but we will have the board members there, we'll have the city council members there, media, as well as, uh, administration and students to help us with that, that groundbreaking. And the final item on here, uh, is our virtual numbers. Uh, when we started in July to receive information from our student body, uh, about who's interested in going virtual, uh, we wound up around thirteen hundred or so, and that went down. We settled in by around eleven hundred and forty students, you can see that number. Uh, Ms. Hobson and her team have gone in and we've sent out information to families to give us your intent. What are you going to do next, actually? Are you going to stay in virtual, or are you going to come out? So you can see the results of that survey, uh, you'll also see, uh, for example, the bicycle. school Centine will ask two students, go from the virtual to a face-to-face with fifty-nine coming back. So a total of six hundred and fifty-seven, so over fifty percent of the initial number that's in virtual school are now coming back to us face-to-face in January. Keep in mind, that six hundred and fifty-seven students have not been in a structured classroom environment since March. Some of those students have not been in a structured classroom environment, possibly three K kindergarten. So one thing I would like to do, and board, I'd like to ask for, vote on this, although it was on the, actually not as a part of the superintendent's report. We know that the six hundred and fifty-seven students coming to us for the first time, and you heard us both by, talk about the open house, and how successful it was for our students and families to receive, strengthen protocols in place, meet with the teacher, the expectations. The reality is, we may have, uh, teachers now teaching different grade levels because they're coming from a virtual, a face-to-face environment. We also will have students that may have to do teaching because of class size and some of those changes. What we would like to do on the calendar, uh, just know if you can pull up the calendar, is make that adjustment to where, uh, let me see, second attention. Originally, uh, January, Tuesday, January fifth was going to be a student day, uh, after we adjusted the calendar back in the fall. Uh, but now, because of that, we would like to dedicate that day as an open house day for those six hundred and fifty-seven students that are currently virtual, will be coming back face-to-face. We felt like it would be a disservice, all of a sudden, we're putting students on buses, and I don't know where to go, they don't know which classroom to go to, they haven't met the teacher. Uh, we did sacrifice one instructional day, but I believe the long run, we'll learn more by doing this, uh, than just all the amount of putting kids after, you know, a nine-month, uh, absence on that classroom. So, uh, motion to amend the, uh, twenty-one school calendar.
Got a motion about Mr. Smith? I hear a second, I'm Mr. Smith, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Motion carries, thank you, Dr. Luke. Mr. Stewart, that's my board. Motion for adjournment, got a motion about Mr. Smith, I hear a second. Got a second by Dr. Randy, all those in favor? Have a good evening, everyone.